And I'm going to ask Councilman Esposito to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. John.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Councilman Curran, please do us a prayer.
As we begin our meeting, let us remember our veterans. For a nation that forgets its defenders will itself be forgotten. It is with the unspoken words of John McCain to be delivered on November 22nd, 1963 that we remember. As our power grows, so has our peril. Today we give our thanks for the ideals of honor and faith we inherit from our forefathers. For all the decency and purpose, steadfastness of resolve, and strength of will, for the courage and the humility which they possessed and which we must seek to emulate as we express our gratitude, we must never forget that the highest appreciation is not to utter words, but to live by them. Let us therefore proclaim our gratitude for providence, for manifold blessings; let us be humbly thankful for inherited ideals, and let us resolve to share the blessings of liberty and those ideals with our fellow human beings throughout the world. As we celebrate this month of recent recompense and Thanksgiving, we pray that God holds our veterans and their families in His hands and continues to guide us as we renew our commitment to our city.
Thank you, Councilman. Okay, this time the clerk, please go to the floor.
Big Man, Nagashet, Ellis, Trombetta, Caladino, Perkins, Visconti, Chanice, Esposito, Sadi, Cabo.
Present.
Lotello.
Here.
Diggs.
Here.
Taichol.
Present.
Arcanti.
Present.
Curran.
Here.
Atne.
Here.
Levy. Wiley. Seaberry.
Here.
Stanley.
Okay, there being fourteen present and seven absent. Just for the record, Mr. House is at a family event. He should be here a little later. Mr. Trombetta is out of town. Mr. Caladino remains on the injured reserve list. We do wish him a speedy recovery, given his various problems and health issues. Mr. Chanice is at a neighborhood meeting. Uh, Mr. Sadi is at a family event. And I believe that covers our absences for tonight. We expect both Mr. House and Mr. Sadi to be here. First thirty minutes of each council meeting reserved for public speaking. It's a way for the members of the council to address the, members of the public to address the council. If there's any member of the public that wishes to address the council this evening, he must be a taxpayer, a citizen of Danbury, and/or a resident of the city of Danbury. So at this time, is any member of the public that wishes to address the council's seat? A member of the public that wishes to address the council's seat. So you can now move on with our regularly scheduled meeting. There are several announcements I just want to point out to you as the Veterans Day goes, draws near. It's important that we spend time recognizing those, particularly those soldiers tonight who, families tonight who are going through some difficult, tragic times at Fort Hood, Texas. I know the chief Baker Sutton is there. Thankfully, he's safe and sound. The chief will pray for him also as they hear what he saw after that tragedy. Uh, but just to point out a couple, uh, items of interest to the public as well as to the council. Our annual Veterans Day ceremony, as always, will be held at the Warner Building, Rogers Park, 11:00 AM. You'd like to see a nice turnout there from the council. We also then will be moving over to Western Connecticut State University, uh, where they'll be having a Veterans Day program as well. On the thirteenth is the Vietnam Memorial Ceremony. It's a short one, uh, at the Vietnam Memorial at 10:00 AM. On the twelfth, the Exchange Club is having a Veterans Night Program. It's the Lan- Anthony's Light Club, 6:15. Um, in addition to that, you'll see other events that are listed out on the, uh, agenda, and certainly you can contact me, uh, for the best time to go. We also are having the, uh, state food pantry drive by Governor Ralph in her office. That'll be on November the seventh, which is Saturday. Chief, from 10 to two, we're asking members of the public to bring canned goods, uh, to the, uh, firehouse on New Street. We'll then be pulling those canned goods with other firehouses across the state to be able to help those of the West Virginia and us during the Thanksgiving Day, uh, period. So Chief, thank you for taking on that task when we have the governor. I also want to thank you for doing that as well. Uh, with that, uh, we have one birthday this month. Councilman Lotello turns 26. Congratulations, Councilman. Great birthday. And, uh, Mr. President, the minutes, please.
Thank your honor. Just kind of like to make a motion to waive the reading of the minutes if all members had time. Please, we copy our comments and see if we can.
Second. Question made second by Councilman Perkins. Are any, any delicious corrections or additions in the minutes as presented? So you can now try your minds on the segments in a minute. All who are in favor, please signify the same. Aye.
Aye.
Or opposed, signify the same day. Aye, said the motion carries. Uh, Dan, please. Mr. Matory, there. I consent, please, receive.
Thank your honor. Consent calendar for November 5th, 2009. Uh, number one, receive the communication to approve the proposed budget for the Danbury train station lease. Number two, receive the communication to approve the incorporation of the, of the early and, uh, Leirone funds. Number seven, receive the communication and adopt the resolution to authorize Mayor Marty Bowden to sign any documents necessary to perpetuate the purposes of grant application to the Tennessee Commission on Cultural Enforcement, to conserve preservation and the same division for Richter Park. Number eight, receive the communication and adopt the resolution to authorize Mayor Marty Bowden or Police Chief Baker to accept grant funds to the state of Connecticut Department of Transportation, Division of Highway Safety for the 2010 comprehensive driving under the influence enforcement program. Number nine, receive the communication and adopt the resolution to authorize Mayor Marty Bowden to acquire a chief peril to apply for and accept funding from the Federal Emergency Management Agency for prior prevention and grant. Number ten, receive the communication and adopt the resolution to authorize Mayor Marty Bowden or Scott Leroy to apply for and accept funding from the state of Connecticut Department of Public Health to promote optimal health quality near the city of Danbury. Number eleven, receive the communication and adopt the previously approved resolution to authorize Mayor Marty Bowden or Paul Espin to apply to the Federal Aviation Administration and the state of Connecticut for airport approval. Number fourteen, receive the communication and approve the request for renewal of the water line extension at 228 Little River Road, subject to compliance with standard city engineering department conditions for submission of plans and documents satisfactory for the Corporation Council's office. Number fifteen, receive the communication and approve the request for the renewal of the sewer or main extension for Candide Park Incorporated, subject to compliance with submission of plans and documents satisfactory to Corporation Council's office and the standard city engineering department's condition, including additional, uh, conditions of the engineering departments on our date in October 6th, 2009. That sewer is the consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. Matory. What's your pleasure, Council? Councilman Teschels?
Thank your honor. I'd like to make a motion to accept a consent calendar, as you said.
Question made second by Councilman Cowan. Was any discussion related to the consent calendar? Mr. Chanice?
I'd like to have either of the seven removed.
Item seven is removed from the consent calendar. Any other discussion related to the consent calendar? So you can now try your minds with acceptance of the consent calendar. With item seven removed, all who are in favor, please signify the same. Aye?
Aye.
All opposed, signify the same day. Aye, said the motion carries. Dan, please. Madam Clerk, item three, please.
Communication request to transfer road to the city. Peterson Farm.
What's your pleasure, Council? Councilwoman McHann?
Thank you, your honor. I'd like to approve the Corporation Council and the City Engineering Commission for Reports.
Seeing no objection, is so ordered. Madam Clerk, item four, please.
Communication request for approval. Victorian Meadows, 120 to 130, Osborne Street.
What's your pleasure, Council? Councilwoman Stanton?
Thank you, your honor. I'd like to refer this to the Corporation Council, uh, the Director of Planning, uh, the Planning Commission for Reports.
Seeing no objection, is so ordered. Madam Clerk, item five, please.
Communication request to renew water line easting of Little Plain Road from Danbury Six Associates to Alabaska.
What's your pleasure, Council? Councilwoman McHann?
Thank you, your honor. I'd like to refer this to the City Engineer and Labor Commission for Report.
Seeing no objection, is so ordered. Uh, Madam Clerk, item seven, please. Text, please.
Communication request for renewal of sewer extension of Zinn Road.
What's your pleasure, Council? Councilwoman Diggs?
Thank you, your honor. I'd like to refer to the City, City Engineering and Planning for Reports.
Seeing no objection, is so ordered. Now, Madam Clerk, item seven, please.
Resolution. Connecticut Cultural and Tourism Grant from Richter Park. Task for your review is a resolution that will allow the city of Danbury to apply for a grant from the Connecticut Commission on Culture and Tourism. The city is applying for this grant on behalf of Richter Park as it will assist in a continuing effort to restore Richter House. In August of 2008, granting the award to the city for the Connecticut Commission on Culture and Tourism for the purpose of conducting an architectural study and a needs assessment for Richter House. This current request in the amount of $75,000 will be used to implement some of the recommendations of the study, including making the structural watertight. This grant requires a one-to-one cash match. To meet this match, $50,000 is available in the city budget in the account CP 0809P17389, and $25,000 is available for Richter Park to the Richter House Restoration Fund. Please contact me if you require any additional information. From David St. Blair, Director of Finance.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. What's your pleasure, Council? Mr. Cowan.
Thank your honor. I'd like to make a, I'd like to make a motion that we receive the communication and adopt the resolution, um, authorizing you to apply for the grant fund and, uh, accept them if they are provided.
Question made and seconded by Councilman Lotello. Discussion related to this particular grant application. Mr. Chanice?
Thank you, your honor. Um, in summary, I'd like to know if you have the authority from the Richter Park Authority, if I could speak and give us an update on the Richter House and see where we came on that? Because it was my understanding that the $50,000 that we'd managed over like a year, two years ago, that the roof should already been watertight by now. So, and the fact that the, that the same $50,000 is still available, so.
Let me just, uh, interrupt Mr. Chanice. The, the money could not be spent for the grant that we received from the cultural, uh, organization that provided the study on the watertightening of the building. So we had to get the study done first. Now it's done. Now we can move forward to the watertightening. That's why we had to hold up. And it was, otherwise we would have done work that may not have been approved by the architect, by the Historic Society that reviewed the significance of the home. But, um, Mr. Blaisfield is here. I don't know if I hit that close enough to you, but he has to go up here.
Your honor, James Blaisfield, very interesting questions regarding the Richter House. And that's correct. Uh, we, luckily, as you know, we've now been, you know, deemed a historical building, which is fantastic for our city, and this allows this, this matching grant to occur. So, are waiting to get the, the information about what to do with this great, uh, this great, uh, building is going to be brought forth to the city shortly. And , uh, we waited to, uh, to get all our information on that that we just, you know, were relating to you now. That helps to get us this matching grant.
Any other discussions, Mr. Chanice?
So, again, what we want to ask, or just something on the house in general, is this be enough to actually watertighten the roof and, you know, just give us something and what's actually going on?
Uh, we, you will hear shortly, and this is going to be released, uh, fairly soon. Uh, there are three phases you will hear about. First phase is to make the house watertight, and this will help us significantly to get to that point. We're in no way injuring this building right now by, you know, lack of, of being watertight. We deem that to be okay, but if you want to spend wasted money until we had the correct, so, you know, assumption of what to do here. Having a historical building that we now have, you know, provides us with information that we have to maintain in order to, to, uh, to go forward as a historical, you know, building. So that's one item. Phase one is to, is to just make this building watertight, and that, you know, this money will help to do that. We're fairly close to that amount that needs to be done.
Then the next phase is, I think, are you going to back the city for more funding? Or are you going to take that from now before?
Well, we, we should be, uh, exposing our, our thoughts on this. This is part of the master plan for the Richter, uh, Park, uh, of which we're going to enlighten everyone here in the next couple of weeks on that whole plan. In that plan, uh, has not only phases for the house, but also for the, for the actual, you know, complete park. Uh, we will release all that information that we have been, you know, gathering and we've been working very hard to get that for you shortly.
Thank you, Mr. Uh, should we see any other discussions regarding this grant? Mr. Perkins? Mr. Blaisfield?
Sorry, Mr. Blaisfield. This is phase one. Is it, the completion date is for next year, 2002, or can this get done this year?
Uh, this will be done within the next, we plan to start this in the spring. So, uh, you know, the good weather comes around, we can start. Uh, as soon as good weather occurs in three months or so, we can get this completed.
Is there something coming to the roof right now?
Right now, we're fine. You know, the present roof, uh, is okay.
Let me just, uh, spend those comments, stay tuned. Uh, I think we got a pretty creative and thoughtful way to approach this difficult challenging situation. Any other discussion about the grant? Seeing none then, I'll try your minds on allowing us to apply for the grant. All who are in favor, please signify the same. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Dan, please. Uh, Madam Clerk, items eight through 11, write consent. Item twelve.
Report. Boulevard Drive sanitary sewer extension survey. Dear Mayor, Bob, Lieutenant, Councilmen, others, the county council has received a request from the property owners in the Boulevard Drive area to review the possibility for the extension of sanitary sewer. After the initial public hearing for the project, county council voted to proceed with the final design for this project. The design of the project offered some challenges, particularly the need and location for a pump station. We reexamine the exposure of the pump station in the neighborhood and are proposing a less truss structure to serve the neighborhood. As part of that design, we have gotten a revised and updated opinion of probable cost, which reflects today's market prices. We re-surveyed the property owners to see how much interest there still is in this proposal based on the current cost of the economy. The now re-surveyed soliciting input from those property owners who have benefited from the extension of the city sanitary sewer system in the Boulevard Drive has been completed. The result of this survey was completed on October 8th, 2009 with the following results. Yes, 3%, which represents 10.7%. No, was 22, which represents 78.6%. And no response was 3, which represents 10.7% for a total of, uh, 28 total number of lots in the survey. A color-coded map showing how the owners of the lots that would be served voted have been prepared. The map is available in my office for review. Hopefully, this information will assist you in your deliberations as to whether the sanitary sewer construction project can continue to go forward. If you have any questions, please feel free to contact me, Mary Tooley Earth, Corey, City Engineer.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. What's your pleasure, Council? Mr. Cowan?
Your honor, I'd like to question, I'd like to ask Mr. Corey or Mr. Leroy, uh, just a question about health concerns in the project.
Mr. Corey, please.
Corey, are there any health department concerns or any sanitary concerns in this area that you know of, that you're aware of?
Not to my knowledge.
We'd like to have a second for, uh, for, um, you know, next to the city budget, these sewer projects are probably one of the most difficult things for us to do. Usually, we see a 49 to 51% vote yes and no. So, at this time, I'd like to, uh, just make a motion based on the 78.6% of no's in the survey to receive this report and take no action.
Okay, uh, I would just, uh, mention to Mr. Pinter for the record and for the clerk that, uh, in the substance of this report and taking no action is deemed in denial, uh, of the, uh, process, uh, for purpose, for our purposes of our, 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 our moratorium. So, just want to be clear about that. Um, he's being seconded. Is that Mr. Fisher? Okay. Any other discussion about this particular application? Seeing none then, I'll try your minds. Uh, taking no action, all who are in favor, please signify the same. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? And motion carries. Minutes, Madam Clerk, item thirteen.
Report. Briar Ridge Road area sanitary sewer extension survey. Dear Mayor, Bob, and county council members, the now surveyed soliciting input from those property owners who have benefited from the extension of the city sanitary sewer system in the Briar Ridge Road area has been completed. The results of this survey were filed on October 8th, 2009 with the following results. Yes, 22, representing 19.47%. No, 56, representing 49.56%. No response, 35, representing 30, 40, 97% for a total number of lots in the survey of 113. A color-coded map showing how the owners of the lots that would have been served voted has been prepared. The map is available in my office for review. Hopefully, this information will assist you in your deliberations as to whether the sanitary sewer construction project could, should go forward. If you have any questions, please feel free to contact me, Mary Tooley Earth, Corey, Al Corey, City Engineer.
Madam Clerk, what's your pleasure, Council? Okay, uh, please let the record reflect Mr. Chanice. He's not participating in voting on a discussion about said application before. Is Mr. Nagashet, any of his base?
Thank you, your honor. Um, I'd like to make a motion, uh, on the side, based on the previous side of, uh, similar situation where there seems to be an overwhelming no response, make a motion to receive the report and take no action.
Question made and seconded by Councilwoman McHann. Receive the report and take no action. Any discussion about, uh, Ben's House or anything like that? Just kidding. Uh, Mr. Lotello.
Thanks, your honor. I'd like to address to Ad hoc committee, uh, usually Engineering and Finance Rights Corporation Council, and the Development of the City Court. I'd like to have the office send a couple of letters to the, uh, survivors, uh, who have been, uh, provided.
Mr. Corey, I want to hear, I think this is our eventual committee.
Your honor, I don't believe it has, Mr. Corey, but it's typically sent to the engineering department to send a letter of interest to immediately, immediately vote for turn it. I don't believe the committee has, or a, either of the committee has been set up as yet. I heard, I believe so.
Mr. Corey, if you could just answer a quick question that I might have in terms of process. Was this, uh, particular application around the council agenda, is this a straight referral to you?
I believe it did. Um, usually they do for, uh, public hearing if the council selects, uh, but as I've been seeing, uh, majority of it is known, and so they can vote it tonight if they want to, or they can vote it publicly.
Was this the first or second, uh, survey that was provided? Is it the first survey? Do we have that second? Okay, that's all right. The, the final, I think, they say, like, uh, okay. Okay, at this time, then I'll appoint that committee of the following individuals. That committee showed assistance. Uh, ah, Mr. Visconti can be the chair, just because he has to be sitting there. Mr. Seaberry would like to join him on a night out in town. And, um, because Mr. Nagashet made the motion, uh, make arrangements to attend that meeting also.
This is a short meeting, Mr. Visconti.
You know, we did short jokes.
Too many of them.
I'm sorry, Mr. Visconti, I'm sorry. You can file a hostile complaint. Okay, uh, I'll take care of item thirteen. Out of this fourteen and fifteen, with consent, Mr. President, Department reports, please.
Your honor, I'd like to make a motion that we waive the meeting of the Department reports as all members have copies and copies of the final decision.
Also made by, and seconded by Councilman Lotello. So any discussion related to the Department reports? Okay, Council, thank you. As we're going to move on to this discussion presentation. So, uh, this time, all who are in favor of accepting the reports, please signify the same. Aye?
Aye.
In the opposition, okay, reports are accepted. Before, uh, we move into executive session, we have a couple of things, uh... Chief, that's a lovely shift, man. You're a fire chief. Where's your red? You want to see it? Boo. You should have called with the law. Um, you know, uh, obviously, yeah, we had elections on Tuesday night, and, uh, I want to congratulate, first of all, all the folks that won. Uh, you know, there was, um, I think I was particularly proud of how well this campaign was run on both sides in the sense that folks really stuck to the issues and they really tried to go out and do the right thing, which is to talk to residents and explain, uh, what their vision or how they wanted to help our city grow. And I think, whether you're Democrat, whether you're Republican, or Independent, whatever, the point is that you want to help the community. And at the end of the day, that's really what it's all about. So I want to congratulate everybody up here that ran and won. Uh, if there's folks out in the audience that were successful, we congratulate you as well. Uh, but we do have some folks that have decided to step down and to, uh, help the community in different ways. And so, um, I have some special, uh, presentations for each of them. I'm going to, uh, just say a few remarks about each of these folks, and then I'm going to ask, uh, the majority leader to say a few remarks, if he so desires, or our president to say a few remarks. Uh, will certainly, uh, allow the folks on your side of the aisle to respond as well. And then open up to any council person that wants to say anything. Uh, but firstly, I want to apologize for everybody that ever recruited, both Democrat and Republican, to come on the county council. And as I always told you guys, it's only one meeting a month. And, um, and so your brain that I use a lot, and sort of true, right. Uh, but, um, I got to tell you, this particular individual, I did tell her there's only one meeting a month. And, uh, she's a piece of cake. Don't worry about it. You know, you're going to have a ball. And, um, she's done a really terrific job. Uh, she's a passionate advocate for, uh, this community. I've been honored and proud to work with her. And her husband is also an active community, uh, person as well, involved in many boards and commissions. And I know this individual isn't necessarily, um, giving up her work in the community. She'll do other things in the community, but it's a chance for her to test her talents in other areas. And so, I know we haven't seen the last of them. She knows I'm going to call her with some committee or commission or, or something to do, but, um, we want to thank her for her service. So Jane Diggs, I want to thank you for your work.
Thank you, your honor. I mean, it's really been my pleasure, my honor, to, to serve on, on this diet for the past five years. And, Mark, you really did lie to me in five years. I know when I was first appointed, I was actually in the state of West Virginia, actually community. So it was really tough. But it's really been my honor and pleasure to, to serve, and it was really an honor in terms of actually earning your respect. So, uh, first of all, congratulations to all the winners, and I really wish you well. Uh, and just looking around the dais, I want to know if any of you around the third, you guys, are charged to eat your... we're charged to each of you and to everyone in Danbury is we need more young people up here. I'm honest, I'm very honest when I say that. Need more younger people up here, more females up here on the diets and more individuals look like me. So, but once again, you haven't seen the last of them because I'm a very active person and I'm a very honest person and very changeable, but in all honesty, I'm a little one thing on my own from twenty-eight, two thousand four. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Jane, and appreciate your words. This next individual, I think I told her it was one meeting a month as well. And. And I've enjoyed working with her a lot. She's been just super active, super engaged, sits down in the corner there, kind of every time I look down there, this is terrible, but I always think of sort of like, I always call it the hook down there, kind of like on a crap table, not that I've ever been to the scene. And I watched the movie a couple of times. But you're sort of out the ends there and Louise, while she's small, she's, her voice is very powerful and she certainly has been a passionate advocate for the issues that concern her. That's really what the council is about, each individual bringing their life experiences, their passions to this diet, sharing them with myself and the rest of the carcasses. She's done a terrific job. She did get elected to be Constable, so you know, don't be dashing or anything like that, but we're really proud, I'm proud of her to have worked with her these many years. I think it came out in two thousand three, Louise, is that right? So congratulations to you for all the years of service and thank you very much.
I'd like to thank all my constituents in the first ward who have supported me over the last six years. I can remember when I won my first election. I was so excited, someone from the News Times reported that I looked like a contestant on Let's Make a Deal. I just won her hard when I won number two. I am still that excited for you, Mayor Dutton, and for all of you up here on the council. I'm so proud of you all, you're doing a great job. I will miss Shay a lot, but he'll have Phil Cole sitting up here with him in the hot seat that has to vote first, which is a hard thing to do. But I thank you all, it's such a pleasure to be on this council and I'll see you all when I deliver your comments.
Okay, certainly last but not least, this individual has served in this council for many, many, many years. He came in to be hired and has served through the Diary Administration, the Sauer Administration, the Eric West Administration, and now my administration. He's put up with all of us mayors and he's done it in a way that's been compassionate, passionate, caring, thoughtful, never confrontational, but always with a word of wisdom, advice. He's told me the great stories of his trips to Washington DC with his family. I wish I was there, I don't mind, you should have called me because that sounds like so much fun. A true, true family man and really somebody that I look up to and really listen to when he has some thoughts and advice. And it's just sometimes a kind word, maybe just a pat on the back. He's a straight shooter, he's going to tell you exactly what he thinks, there's no obfuscation about where it is coming from. And John, we're going to miss you here and the city is going to miss you. And this is truly the loss for our community that you won't serve in this capacity, but I know you'll be doing other great things with your life and I know you promised to take me to Washington just for the weekend. John, I've got a token of our appreciation. Once I present this, I would ask the council, we're going to start with Mr. Seaberry, go to Mr. Cavill, go to each side and say a few words about all of our folks that are leaving. And then, John, I'm going to ask you to join me, John, Mr. Shepherd is in the additional special presentation on some things that the council is down for. So come out up here and get this and you're going to have to say a few words. Congratulations.
To be recognized in this manner by this prestigious group of people here on the diets and my family in the audience is certainly an honor, not only for me, but for my family as well. My longevity on the council has been nothing more than a labor of love and I've loved every minute of it, but no regrets at all. And to work with these people here on the diets has been a compliment for me to, they allowed me to be here so long. And I'm glad to have the opportunity to thank the people of the fourth district, the fourth ward for their support and their confidence in me in allowing me to serve so long. And before I close, I'd like to mention the fact that it's been my pleasure to work with my partner, Tom Soddy. It's been a pleasure working with Tom and without him, I probably would have quit long time. However, again, I'm glad I had this opportunity and I want to thank everybody concerned and God bless you all and God bless our great city of Danbury.
Thank you, John. And at this time, we're going to kind of go around the hall and then let's do the council presentation up here. And then we'll go ahead and do our special presentation. So, may I teach you how to come up and just, sorry, council presentation. Corey, Mr. Seaberry?
We have a little something for you, Johnny. And this is for you. And we love you and we miss you so much.
John, this is a pleasure. It's been an honor knowing you. I've trusted your guidance and your knowledge and your tremendous. It's been a tremendous role model for all of us. This is just a minor token of our appreciation, a gift certificate to Chuck's. And we talked about it last night and said something like that. Is there any place that you guys would like to give a gift certificate to John? And before they said anything, I said, I think Chuck's is good because I like to do it. John, enjoy this with our love and our respect and our admiration. Thank you. All right, John, we're not finished with you yet, so don't go anywhere. Mr. Seaberry, do you want to add anything to that? Very well.
Yeah, just one more to the ladies here, Louise and Jane, it's been an honor to have you amongst our married group of people here. Once again, it's been tremendous working with you. I wish you the most possible success that you have in your days ahead of you and I know that neither one of you are going to quit and turn to the city of Danbury. And on behalf of all of our colleagues, I want to thank both of you tremendously. And John, what I said a moment ago, it's been a pleasure and an honor working with you. Thank you all very much.
Mr. Midrider, do you want to take a second to reflect your thoughts? God bless you, somebody ready?
John. Gentlemen, John, that's what's been said about you, a great father, a great friend, a great husband, and a role model. And I had the opportunity some months ago at a dinner to say a few words about John. I won't repeat them all, but just to highlight what I've seen over the last ten years serving with you, before that campaigning for you, you were the one. What most strikes me always about John is his family, his love of family and their love of him. I just hope that I can measure up to that as a father and a husband and measure up to all that you have done. And I said something at that dinner that, you know, when I was eleven, twelve years old and we were already on the council. And I was watching, and I was watching, and I was watching some more movies and people have heard this before, and one of them was the Sands of the Wajima. I never thought I'd be sitting next to a man. Not someone in the movies, but someone who served on the Sands of the Wajimas was wounded there. It's really a role model, John, and I appreciate the ten years we've been able to serve together and we'll continue to seek your advice and I certainly hope I have your friendship for many, many more years in the future. God bless you, John. We also, on behalf of your fellow council members here, we have a gift certificate for you to Jim Harper's. My colleagues who are, we're leaving. More leaving is not here with us tonight, but I want to thank him for his service on the council. And to Louise and Jane, for your service, it is oftentimes a thankless job. And sometimes the most exciting part of the job is the night you get elected and then after that, you're like, why did I do this? But we all do it as volunteers. We hope that even though our decisions and our choices may be different than each other on policies at times, that we're making them for the best reasons that we believe is in the best interest of the city. So I wish you all the best and I'm sure I will see you around the city being very active. Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you.
Mr. Cavill.
Thank you, Your Honor. When most of us started this six years ago, John, it took me a big time. I would have to say to Louise on the end, our council mom, I want to refer to Amanda Louise, and it has nothing to do with age, it has been through experience and you've given tremendous voice to us and you've lent certain expertise to help all of us make a lot of our decisions with our city, with the council. And for that, I'm very grateful for the time that we spent with you. And when I'm letting you go, you may be stepping out of here, but you're not stepping away and we're going to miss you here though. I'd like to also mention Mr. Calendrino, who's not here tonight, who's been going through some serious health issues and has not been able to function in this past year, last month or so, as a council person, active councilperson. And his wisdom and knowledge and economics and finance have just been invaluable to a lot of us and we would certainly miss him actively participating with us, but I certainly, as his fellow councilman for the last six years, will be drawing on his experience in the future going forward. So Mike will miss you, but we were happy to have you for the six years to gain our council conscience and thank you for the years that we've worked together and it's been a period of pleasure having you here with us. And we will draw new insurance, as Mayor said, for the future, we will fully have personal research, we will continue to grow for the future in the future. Mr. Esposito. I would have to say, a lot of words were spoken here tonight, and we bow to you, our spot on, the thought that kept in my mind about you is Dependable. And Dependable reaches out into all aspects of your life and it reaches out into your family, to your friends, to your constituents, and to us here on the council. And I am very glad to have had you as a friend and I am very glad to have worked with you over these last six years. You are the council anchor. So to the council mom, council anchor, council chambers, council finance person, I thank all of you for what you lent us and what you've given to the city of Danbury and we're grateful for that. And wish you all a continued success, whatever road your path will take you and how we cross the new journey. Thank you.
Okay, John, just one more thing. We've been busy at work during these last couple of weeks, I want to follow me. We wanted to start a tradition here at the city of Danbury. If you notice, when you go outside on the wall there, in the hallway, there are pictures of all the mayors that have served our city over many, many years. The sitting mayor, actually, his picture or her picture is always on the wall facing opposite and of course, it's been mine, lucky Tuesday, it must have stayed on for two years. But anyways, it's a whole different story. But it's really cool if you go in there and you have to walk down that hallway and look at those pictures and look at those mayors and think about what the city was like, think about what their hopes and their dreams were like, what their aspirations were like for the community. All of them were dedicated activists in their own way and I really get a sense of history, even now after being here eight years, when I walk down this hallway, I almost hear those voices speaking to me as I walk by and look at them. So, John, I want to create sort of a tradition that way here in the council. When somebody does something extraordinary, when they serve this community and are way above and beyond the call of duty, as you have done, and when they did it for free, they didn't ask for anything, they didn't why anything, they just wanted to make a better city, we decided that it would be appropriate and that would be right, that here in the council chambers, we would create our own wall of fame, if you sort of recall that. So that in future generations of children and council people that come in here can look at that and they'll know the good things that you've done for this, for this community over many years. So tonight, we're going to present this plaque, we'll show you this plaque, which will be mounted on the wall and it'll be there for perpetuity, it'll be there forever, as a way to say thank you for all that you've done for our great city. So, John, I'm going to ask you, be careful when you pull it off. Mr. Shepherd, do you give us a hand here? We've got a, we're doing a veil here and then. You got it? You gotta take that off. It says, "The city of Danbury honors John J. Esposito in recognition of twenty-eight years of consecutive dedicated service, nineteen eighty-one to two thousand nine, longest in the history of our city as a member of the Danbury County Council." And by the way, starting December third, this will be the city council, so John will always have the record as being the longest-serving county council. Nobody will ever take that away from him forever. It says, "We, the members of the County Council, all Danbarians, salute John as he completes exemplary service with unmatched respect. Joe Cavill, President, County Council, Martin Gobden, Mayor, City of Danbury, February two thousand nine." So, John, I'm going to ask that Mr. Shepherd give a hand. How many engineers do we have in the room to make sure we can hang this plaque? At least three and we'll have to fill out the paperwork and triplicate later on. But why don't we go ahead and place that up on the wall so we can, we can look over this. Mr. Shepherd, Mr. Esposito, go ahead. Mr. Rick.
This is going to be ten minutes. Well, Alonso, help.
We did test this really. We got to get Mr. Rick here.
Oh, taking a picture now.
The professionals coming. John, trust me, it'll be up there tonight. Don't we put diesel, set up a diesel over there? It really did work. It's like that IT thing, you know, you try to do the PowerPoint. John, congratulations again, God bless you. John's family's all here, thank you, and he's very thankful that you're here.
Yes, I am.
Okay, now we get to do an executive session, how exciting is that? Oh hey folks, we do have cake and refreshments inside our next floor in room 3, safe for the family. John's picture is on there, so if you wanna cut his face up... John, why don't you go ahead and take the family in there and have some cake?
Alright, let's go.
John! I gotta talk to you about something. This is a good one. John, I've got one other thing for you. Okay, folks, if I could have a quick attention, just a second here, I wanna clear the room. I've got a letter that's come all the way from California. It says, "Dear Johnny, congratulations on your 28 years of service. You're always one of my favorite council members in all of Los Lollas. I still treasure the memories of our firewood sales and get-togethers after our council meetings at the Eldorado. We had a lot of fun and accomplished some very good things for the city of Danbury. Danbury is listening to you, hardworking and dedicated representative tonight. And we have good thoughts on you, John, wish you the very best in the future. Signed, County Executive, as the former president of the county." Okay, we've got refreshments, John, can we move the family in cabin? We're gonna go ahead and do the executive session.
Just now I'd like to make a motion to approve the settlement relating to the matter of Medcannadaby in accord with the terms provided and explained by the coverage of council and approved by the court and to adopt the resolution presented to us tonight from official intent authorizing reimbursement of expenditure as such settlement in a maximum amount from approved settlement sum from issuance of bonds in form and manner to be authorized by the county council on 18 months here of to appropriate $375,000 from fund balance for the purposes of reimbursement of legal cost involving settlement of this matter in accordance with the attached certification for the market performance.
What you made, seconded, Mr. County, any discussion related to this settlement? Seeing that now, I'll try to remind you, so in this case, all is in favor of the superpart, saying aye?
Aye.
In the opposition? Want you again, ask Randy, appreciate your good work. I've got, I wanna take responsibility for one add-on item. This was at my desk prior to the cutoff of the agenda and frankly, you know, the whole blue, this piece of that's a certificate at the right time. So this is, we label this item 18, Mr. President. Okay, I'll pass our motion to add on, this is a title we issued. Okay, what's the main section to, to item 18 is an add-on, all is in favor of adding to this sign? Do you have a copy of the add-on? What's the main, seconded to add this item on as item 18, all is in favor of adding on, superpart, saying aye?
Aye.
No opposed? Just to give you a quick overview before the clerk reads the letter. This is really an extension of our, an extension, but it's in addition to our contract with local labor and international association firefighters. It relates to the airport crash and rescue team. It basically will provide compensation when firefighters have to be trained as it relates to FAA requirements for airport emergency services. Doesn't mean that everybody's going to be trained. If we send them for training, we'll require to do that, we'll compensate to the cell, to the schedule that Sir Henry and Ludimichi are, the president's family are, they're returning to university. So, I have a bunch of questions.
Agreement, it's agreed between the city of Danbury and the local 801 International Association firefighters. Dear members of the county council, in the course, please find an agreement between the city of Danbury and the local 801 International Association firefighters regarding the airport crash and rescue team, ARFF. Such an agreement will provide specially trained firefighters to meet the FAA requirements for airport emergency response. I respectfully request your support of this agreement, which benefits our firefighters, our citizens, and the safety of our airport. Sincerely, Marty Dutton, Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, what's your pleasure? Mr. Gray? Seconded by Mr. Seaberry. Chief, do you want to give us a quick overview of our council documents?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Seaberry. This agreement really just formalizes some things that we've been doing with the department for the last several years. It really is, is kinda tying up some loose ends, both as far as record keeping that's required, you know, for the FAA and other entities that wanna make sure that our training's up to speed. Anytime certain things happen at the airport, when we have to perform over there, the FAA wants to indicate that we've been trained to a certain standard. And we kinda carved this out, started this process about a year ago and started formalizing the agreement sometime in April and went through most of the training. As you'll see in the agreement there, the dates are talking. Some of the training was completed during the summertime, the final light burn training, which is an FAA requirement, was actually completed just a month ago. So all that training is now done and with the signing of this agreement, we'll actually have completed all the pre-training parts of this. And this is annualized training, takes a certain number of hours, put the people through the light burn and most of the training will be done on the job, on duty, in regular service.
Thank you, Chief. Have you any questions for the Chief, Mr. Rattell?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Shepherd, Chief. Chief, are these guys gonna be the first responders that we're talking about here?
I'm sorry, they're gonna be the first responders? Yeah, what this will happen is, one of the big things that this is designed to address is that, for example, if the FAA or a current carrier out of the airport decides that he wants to start flying like a 10-passenger airplane, the FAA requires that when that plane is rotating, coming in or taking off, that we have to have one of these types of firefighters at least on the scene at the time. So what this does is create that pool of firefighters that can be there. And that has to be scheduled 24 hours in advance. That's the type of thing that we're dealing with, with the FAA regulations.
Thank you, Mr. Rattell. Any other discussion related to this?
Mr. Wisconsin? Thank you, Your Honor, through the Chair and Chief. This is an agreement, obviously, between the city of Danbury, local 801. Will they be the only people who will be trained in this or will it be outside entities that will be trained also, such as the volunteer? Where does this, what's the volunteer responsible for?
No, this is just for those people who would be able to fill that FAA regulation. And like I said, we kinda picked the number of 12. We can go down to a minimum of eight within this agreement. The training will not be passed on to the volunteers, it's not gonna be something that has to be done that way. And as a matter of fact, in the event we have one of those planes making the rotation, the FAA requirement is just that we have at least one person on the job at that time. And with this agreement, it gives us anywhere from two to three per crew to allow us to make sure that that happens. That was just the number that was carved out to, to make sure we fit the agreement for FAA.
Mr. Perkins? Thank you, Your Honor. To you, to Mr. Calhoun. This, this money comes out of your budget, not gonna go to any state or federal funds?
Actually, it's about half and half. Half of the actual stipend part of that, to make sure that these guys, you know, are kept trained and to keep them on the team for the three-year commitment that's on there, that comes out of my budget. The remaining part of the budget that actually pays for the training part is being channeled through the airport administrator, Mr. Estepan, I believe he's here, if you had any questions from him. But he, that, he'll be picking up the training part of that because it really is required on the airport. That's how that's gonna work. Now, whether or not some of that money may or not come out of FAA funds or other grants and stuff, I can't respond to that because I honestly don't know.
Thank you.
Mr. Perkins, any other questions, please? Seeing that now, I'll try to remind you, all is in favor of adoption, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
In the opposition, motion carries unanimously. Before we break, we are trying to arrange a swearing ceremony for November 30th, Monday night. You guys, re-elected, will take office officially, new in December 1st. We'd like to do it at the Palace Theater, that's the thought. We don't have that set up yet, we'll work on that right now, so... The organizational meeting will be Tuesday night, the 1st. Just the organizational meeting, just like the, everybody can see it. Clock is Wednesday night, remember it's only Wednesday in the month. And then Thursday night will be the first of the regular business meeting that we have. So that'll be the schedule, we'll also adopt to schedule meetings for the next meeting, I bet you. Hey, let's not forget we have cake to offer you, so... I'll stand out for minis? Yeah, I'll take a watch for you, John. Mr. Seaberry, seconded by Mr. Rattell, all favor of the term, superpart, saying aye?
Aye.
No opposed?